openness to allow the door of this meeting to be opened by the creator, all that was, is, and ever will be. It's a pleasure and an honor. My name again is Darryl Sellers. I do serve as pastor of Washington Church of the Nazarene. On behalf of myself and this congregation I serve, I want to give you a specific thank you for that gorgeous new intersection right in front of our church. It's looked so much better than what it used to. So we appreciate you. I do wanted to share a short pastor scripture with you. The Lord has laid on my heart for this panel of leaders. Solomon was had just taken the throne after his father David. Verse one of the first chapter of Second Chronicles said he was established firmly. It stuck out to me. He was in power. He was not just stepping in. He wasn't just elected. He was established firmly. He'd been there for a minute. He was long enough to be firmly established. And again, that just kept ringing over and over in my mind. And God asked him in verse seven, he says, he asks Solomon, ask for whatever you want me to give you. There's an open ended question. I think we'd all want to hear from God, right? What is it that you want? What an open ended question. His response is found in verse 10. Most of us know, give me wisdom and knowledge that I may lead this people for who is able to govern this great people of yours. He established that one, the people were not his, they were the Lord's. And two, he established his ability to be to kneel to the sovereign, even though he was established in power. So today I pray for his wisdom as you lead your people in this community that most, if not all of us call home. Let's pray. Father God, we humbly call on your name. We ask in full reverence that you will bestow upon us those here today, your holy wisdom, the wisdom that will guide steps and influence decisions made for your people. May those that sit here today seek your voice and your will fervently and without delay. Lord, we ask that you protect those that you have called to lead your people as they face a higher standard. We plead as these public servants are established in their respective seats, that they seek you and your wisdom consistently. We thank you for your provision, Lord. We praise you in the outcome that as we ask for your will to be done above all others, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen. Thank you.
Thanks, Darryl. All right, we got the meeting minutes from January 24th. Ron, have you got anything on that, corrections or anything?
No corrections.
If not, I'd like to look for a motion to approve.
Still move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got the joint meeting minutes from the commissioner of council on January 24th, also at 10:00 a.m. This is just updating discussion on the renovations of the courthouse. You had a chance to read those, Ron?
Yeah, no corrections.
Okay. If not, look for a motion to approve.
Still move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Highway Department. Chris, morning. You're hiding in the middle today.
I got to talk. And you started the meeting now? I've got a pretty long list here. I'll try to get through most of it before I pass out. The 700 East, 700 East update, the Millings Mine Reclamation. I was asked to give a, just a update on where we're at on that. And on Thursday, February 2nd, myself and Rich Graber, we met with Mike Costello, a consultant working with the surety with Indemnity National Insurance Company. And he's coordinating the reclamation efforts on the building mines. Several items were discussed. The discussed items were the open road bonds that were left over from solar sources. And I'll list them. There's the Campbellburg Mine is what they're calling it. I think, I think we tend to call some of them Billings Mine, but County Road 900 East from US 50 South to the mine entrance, that's a 1.16 mile bond, $116,000. Think it was effective the last time it was signed in September of 2019. Campbellburg Road Mine, Old 50, the equipment crossing, 0.02 miles of equipment crossing, $2,000. And that was September 2019. And they're calling it the Campbellburg Mine, but I think this is the Billings Mine too. But it's County Road 120 South, 0.03 miles. For road closure, $6,000. That was 2019. And then County Road 700 East, the main one that we're talking about, it's a mine through from 500 foot south of County Road 175 South, south to the end at 1.63 miles for road closure at $32,600 effective September 2019. And then we've, we've had some people here asking about the, the road being closed and when they're going to do it. And as we researched that, we had some extensions from the mine that we agreed to. And we extended a three year period, then we extended it a five year period. In that five year period that where we're at now, that road's actually not supposed to be open till, I think it was August of 2023 is where we're at. So even though the mine went, we're still under the agreement. We're still under the agreement. So stuff needs to be done, but it's not like it's set idle, or set idle. But it's not that we've not done anything for, for five years. But the main topic of discussion, the county highway department was strictly the reconstruction and reopening of County Road 700 East and its right of way. Other county highway concerns were the cleaning up and closing of the six way equipment crossing at Old 50 and 800 East, reconstruction in the mine entrance on County Road 900 East because of the poor drainage, and releasing the bond from County Road 120 South. And I got a statement from Mr. Costello basically acknowledging that he's aware, we met with him, he's aware of all the, I don't know, you want me to read it? That'd be better? If you want, go ahead. Okay. It says, Chris, I think the, the key points at this point are the following. I am a consultant working with the surety in Indemnity National Insurance Company that has issued the road bonds related to the Billings Mine. I met with you at the Billings Mine to understand what work is required to reestablish the roads. I understand what is required, and I am working with my engineering department to prepare a cost estimate for the surety to review. And assuming I can complete the project for the amount less than or equal to the bond amount, I will seek approval from the surety to complete the work. Once I receive the surety approval, I will get you a better estimate of the exact timing to complete the work and let him know if we have any questions. So they know what work needs to be done and where it needs to be done. And he's getting a cost estimate. And I sent him some figures and measurements to put that road back. And some of the money off the other bonds to help facilitate that, because I don't know if there's enough money strictly for the 700 East to do what needs to be done.
Which I think we was afraid of that, afraid of that in the beginning anyhow, to be able to have enough money to reopen. Is he pretty confident he could get most of that done?
He acted like he was. And then, you know, we, we talked about having a commissioner serve as a point person to help us out with the, the legal and just the general issues that come around with the coal mines and everything. And, and I would be open to that. Right now, I don't know if we, we need one today, but as we start moving forward, so I can concentrate on the road and the right of way and getting that back open. But there's other things that come along with that, that we don't want to affect the landowners that own land adjacent to the road and alongside the road. And that might be if we have a commissioner involved in it, they might head off some issues that may arise.
I'd be willing to serve that capacity. You have any problem with that, Ron?
No, I've talked to Chris about it and thought it was, at this point premature.
Yeah, but.
It's time, yeah.
Whenever, whenever it's time, we could bring it back up in the commission meeting. But I'd be, I'd be willing to sit on that.
I, I would think that I would still have Mr. Costello contact me.
Yep.
And I communicate with him. And then as we get plans and start moving forward and have act, have actual meetings, if one of you guys could sit in there and keep an eye on me for making a bad decision or something would be good.
I think you're good.
That was the 700 East update. I've just got some general, general things on updates. Troy Road, Endot's going to close, close Troy Road just south of the US 50 bypass sometime maybe October to March to replace the culvert there. So just, I'll give you a heads up when it gets closed. I know that gets pretty busy there.
Right. On the north side or south side?
South side.
South side.
South side of the bypass between there and Destination Yachts, I believe.
How did Chris get in there?
Yeah.
How long did they say what the closure was?
Well, one time they acted like it was going to be maybe three weeks.
Oh, my.
They sent us a letter. That's an awful long time to change a culvert.
It's just a culvert, not a box culvert?
It's a, it's just a 48 inch culvert, is all it is.
Yeah. That's gonna make it a little rough for Destination Yachts to get stuff in and out of there.
Yeah. So they sent me a letter and they said they'd contact me again. But we, I know the guy that's kind of in charge of it, so I'm gonna call him and talk to him about the timeframe there. But I'm sure they were, the whole project may be three weeks, but the road closure may just be a couple of days, I hope. Also, on, on project updates, the development of Westgate at Crane. American Structure Point has been in contact with us at the county highway department about development of a new infrastructure at Westgate at Crane for the new microchip plant and future expansion. We've, we've had an online meeting with them. They answered some basic questions on getting things started. Their intent is for Davis County to eventually assume ownership of the newly constructed road infrastructure. And me and Rich Graber, road foreman here, we've been in discussion about this and we feel it would be, we'd like to acquire the expertise of Dennis Helms at Landmark Surveying. He's been involved with the development there. The, the last time that we built a road up there, I was road foreman under Phil Cornelius. And Dennis, I think, did all the plans on that. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the initial process was to connect Captain Nelson Drive, Innovation Drive, connect them together. And we did one half, we didn't make the connection. So I believe Dennis has the, the plans and everything laid out for that. He's agreed to, to help us facilitate this with Structure Point, but I don't know how he gets paid. Or if you guys want to give me the okay to, to contact Dennis. I would think that after I talked to Ron one time too, that the Structure Point should probably.
Pay for his services?
Pay for his services.
I don't have any, any problem using Dennis at all. I think Dennis does a great job. And like he said, he's already, I think he's got, he's done most of that part up there. So I think he, he understands it better than anybody.
Dennis has it all laid out and he knows exactly what needs to be done. The question is, it's going to be paid for by grant money. But we really don't have any dog in the body and property that they're going to be right away for. But Dennis is more than willing. The question will be with Structure Point. I just, if I were you and they ask you for help, I'd refer him to Dennis.
Well, we need.
Where it goes from there.
We need somebody on, I won't say on our side, but we need somebody on our side helping facilitate this, because it is a major, it's a major investment for them. And it's a major investment for the, the county. And they're wanting us to take over all that infrastructure. And a lot to it.
Right.
And, and Dennis actually, after we got done doing our part for the county that we worked, he, you know, he laid out the blueprints with Phil and everything. And then contractors came in and did a little bit of work. And I believe he kind of, him and, between him and Phil actually helped facilitate and make sure the contractors did what they were supposed to do and did the testing and stuff. So, so I just wanted to see if it was okay with the commissioners to reach out to Dennis, which I've done, or kind of get him involved in this.
Yeah. I think that's, get started and talk to Dennis. And then if you have any problem trying to figure out how to pay for it, if Structure Point doesn't, just come back to the commissioners and figure out a way to pay for it.
And we were gonna loop in Bryant Neoff too. We're gonna give him a call today. This just came about the other day.
Right.
So we, we'll get Dennis in, we'll call Bryant, keep you guys involved.
This will be certainly more expensive than Westgate Drive.
Yeah. Then I was gonna give a project updates that we're doing right now at the county highways. We're going to be doing a lot of crack seal, crack sealing right now. That's what we're doing. We're looking at buying a crack seal machine for the county. We're doing a lot of dirt patching on our blacktop roads from the winter freeze and thall damage. So we're dirt, getting them back in shape.
Chris, one thing on that, I just, it's happened a couple of times and it just makes the road terrible, but let's try not to dirt patch cracks.
Yes.
Please.
We'll make sure we lay, relay that. We've had some new guys. Maybe we've not got that relayed to them.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, they're supposed to be dirt patching.
Dirt patching potholes and then maybe the sides of the road. But let's not try to do the, do the cracks that way, because it just makes a very uneasy ride down the road.
Okay. We have our Road O Ditcher out. And we're putting gravel on, putting a little extra gravel on, starting that process on the, on the problem areas and the highly traveled gravel roads. Just because the winter thall, you know, that rock goes down pretty quick. And just doing our standard day to day operations. AEDs, I don't know if Kathy was in here, but I was gonna thank you guys for okaying her to get us two AEDs for our foreman's trucks. We've got one AED at the, at the shop right now, but we've only got like three guys that work in the shop. Most of our guys are out on jobs. And if we put an AED in the, the foreman's truck, the foreman's usually facilitating that job.
Yeah.
So we've got that. I don't think we've got them yet, but we've got the okay from you guys. We just wanted to acknowledge that. Countywide bridge inspection, last time we talked, we had our committee, our scoring committee and Michael was on there, along with myself and Rich, Troy Foose and Jason Oaks. And we decided to go ahead and stay with SJCA, which Michael Stevenson is here. We had, he's representing them, but we decided to stay with them for the next cycle of our four year bridge inspection, countywide bridge inspection, 2023 to 2026. There were several good, good firms that was wanting it, but we, we thought we would stay with the same one, because all of us on our end was new. And we had just got accustomed to, to Michael and his firm. So we didn't want to make a change one year into my tenure or a year and a half. I don't know. It seems like it's been 10 years, but. Got a couple of other things here I need to run past you. I'm sorry. It's a long one. County employee safety boots. The county employees currently get a hundred dollars every two years for steel toe safety boots. The policy was done in 1998, I believe. And we would like to raise it. We've got 32 employees. I don't know if this is where you bring that up or whatever, but you know, it's not been changed. And we would like to raise it to at least a hundred dollars a year. And we could pay for it out of our, our budget.
I think that's fair. I mean.
I don't, even if.
The kind of work you guys do and the oils you get into and everything else, I mean, it's hard on stuff.
I don't even want guys to go.
Even at a hundred dollars a year, it's not going to cover our work boot probably. But it's better than a hundred dollars every two years. I would be in favor of moving that stipend up. I don't know. How do you feel about it, Ron?
I think you need to determine exactly what's needed and raise it to cover that. My mind, anything for their own boots.
And, and I did some research.
Start with another hundred. That's, that's a good start.
Yeah.
I, I did some research and, and there's some counties that don't give anything. There's some counties that, I think Washington gives 185 a year. We buy good boots. Our guys are on their feet, most of them. And then when we are, we're in the mud, we're in the, we're in asphalt, we're in the tack oils. Even if the boots last two years, you really don't want a guy walking out on the pavement with, with the same boots for two years. It's, it's hard on you.
What's a good pair of boots cost?
Well, I paid about $240 for mine, but, but probably about 170, 140. I do have a couple of truck drivers that, that wear the steel toe safety shoes. That they, they stay in the truck, you know, nine out of 10 days. So we tried to keep the happy medium, you know? They're not gonna, they're not gonna buy $200 boots.
Right.
They're probably gonna buy $100 steel toe safety shoes. So I was, actually, I was thinking 140. Right? You know, 140 a year, you can get a decent pair of boots and then throw them away and get another pair, because they get ruined, souls break down in them.
Would not change that stipend policies in 1998. It's a little, little dated.
Yeah.
I personally have no problem going to that, your recommendation of 140, but if you want to ramp it up over a period of time.
Got in your budget to cover 140?
Yeah. We, we could do the 140. That'd be a good starting point. Not saying we're coming back next year and ask for more. But I, I know I looked at the budget. I think at 21, we had $10,000 for uniforms. And 22, we had $8,000. And 23, we got $6,000. So it kind of makes it hard to facilitate the uniform for the guys.
Right.
I'm looking at cutting out the, our guys. We currently provide them with short sleeve safety shirts and, and long sleeve safety shirts a year, the class three. But we also have been providing them with long sleeve shirts like this. If you wear a long sleeve shirt like this or a short sleeve shirt like this, you gotta have a vest over.
That's long, yeah.
And I think probably two years ago or something, maybe longer than that, three or four years ago, I think they implemented a coat policy every two years, $50 every two years. We didn't have that when the, the uniform shirts were done. So I'm also gonna cancel these kind of uniform shirts for the, the guys, because they're required to wear the class threes anyways.
Right.
We'll continue the class threes. And if we cut these long sleeve shirts out, I think that would help cover the cost of the boots.
Yeah. I don't have any issue at all going to 140 every year, cover the cost of work boots for the highway employees.
Sounds good.
Got a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion from Ron Arnold to raise the boot policy for the county highway garage to every year of $140 to replace boots. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. Two other things I'm gonna look at, I just want to make you guys aware of, is the interlocal maintenance agreements between the town of Montgomery and Davis County and the town of Campbellburg and Davis County. And currently, our maintenance agreement with the town of Montgomery was done in 2013. It's for about a half a mile of road from US 50 North, County Road 100 North. And since then, and I can't remember the date, but they've annexed more county territory. And some of that county territory we're still maintaining. So I'm gonna redo the interlocal agreement with them. I'll talk to them about it and see what they think's fair, if they want to take it over.
Montgomery?
Yeah, this is Montgomery. So from 100 North on Montgomery Road, 100 North, the, just the north property line of the Goshdorf, that's another half a mile that they're, they've annexed.
Anexed, yeah.
That they're, you know, we're still maintaining it.
We maintain it. They just pay us to maintain it, right?
No, they don't pay us for that.
Okay.
We were getting paid for the state from it, but then when they annexed it, we no longer getting funds from the state, but we're still.
I'm saying from the highway to 100.
From the highway to 100, they pay us $1,200 a year.
Okay. But then you're talking from 100 back up another half mile of the road to Goshdorf.
Yeah.
Could be a little bit.
Yeah.
And there, and there's a couple of little areas, other areas that they've annexed that, that we may want to look at. And then, you know, you go by the, the dollars that they're getting for the state for their road mileage, and then divide that up, and it tells you how many dollars they're getting per mile to maintain it. And I don't have a problem with maintaining it, but we were getting paid money to maintain it. And then when they annexed it, we're no longer getting paid that money.
Money, yeah.
So I'm gonna redo them with, I guess I'll send it to you and I'll talk to their, I guess Michael Healy.
Michael Healy, yeah.
Talk to him, but I wanted to let you guys be aware of that. Countywide drainage issues. I guess we don't really have a drainage board, but the commissioner serving that.
Commissioner serving that capacity, yes.
That capacity.
Yeah.
So we're gonna look at some of our policies and maybe get the word out. Everything comes to the county ditch. All the farmers, farmers got more equipment than we got, most of them anymore. And terraces that get put up, the terraces get taken down. But anymore, everything's coming to the county ditches. And it creates problems. It creates feuds between neighbors and between farmers. And a lot of times, we're not aware of it till it's already happened, because there's no, there's no form that these guys have to fill out, because it's off the right of way. They're supposed to fill out, I believe, and I, I looked at Phil a couple of times, because he's here. And he's, he's done this for one or two or 30 years. But is there a, there's an inlet to, inlet to the county ditch, correct Phil? Yeah, a right of way permit. But when they, when they start it, they're out in the middle of a field.
Working their way back.
Working their way back. And so we never really get involved into it till it's already an issue. So we would like to get the word out there and, and make sure that they know, even if they're starting out in the middle of nowhere, when they bring that water to the county ditch, they need to contact us.
Needs to be permitted, yeah.
Yeah. Because we, you know, we don't want it to adversely affect a neighbor, whether it's now or in the future. We want to look ahead, even though we, they want to get that water off their property right now, we need to look at the long term about property selling and building houses and culvert sizes. And you bring a, you bring a ditch to a county road and with water, it's never been there before. And then now the neighbors down the road, they've all, their culverts are too small. They got by at the 12 inch culvert. And then if we go tell them, hey, you gotta dig that up and put a 24 inch culvert in, it's only gonna cost you $3,000. You know, I don't think that's fair. So, so we want to, it's starting to become a big problem. And, and that's a problem we always have. You know, the more concrete, the more houses, the more development.
Just more water.
Everything, yeah. And, and I understand, I, if I'm a farmer, I don't want to ditch through my farm bill. You know, I'm gonna bring it out to the road, but there's a right way and a wrong way to do that. And we want to help be involved in that before it becomes a problem. Like I said, I had a lot of notes. I think the last thing, second to last thing, I thought it was on there, the old US 50 relinquishment?
Yeah, it's, it's number eight, definitely. But go ahead.
Do we want to do that now?
Yeah, go ahead and bring it up.
Okay. So we've been in dealings with, with Endot. They, they want to relinquish a portion of US 50. And that is from the west end of, of Washington city limits, heading west to the dead end of the river. And it's like 2.67 miles. And as we talked to here before, they've given us a couple of offers. And we didn't like them. They gave us a couple more offers. But, but right now, they're offering $2.5 million for the county to take over that infrastructure, about 2.67 miles.
And we take it over and rehab it and maintain it?
Yeah. And there's work that needs to be done on it. You know, right now, it becomes an island for them. So they're, they're wanting to get away from it. Washington took over their section of it, you know?
Right.
And rehab that. And I think after, you know, talking to them and, and with your guys is wanting, I guess, wanting me to reach an agreement with them, I think we've reached a fair agreement with them. So they sent the, the form here, the agreement.
Right.
I don't know if you guys are wanting to sign that or.
I know Grant had a question on that, if you want to speak on the behalf of Grant.
Just a couple of comments. It does say that we shall submit an invoice.
Yes.
Prior to February 1st.
That was wrong. I seen that last night when I was looking at it. I think that, that was the, that was the agreement before. And it was for lesser money. And when, when I didn't accept it, they updated the agreement with the cost and the dates. And I think they skipped over that line.
And that's, that's no, no problem. I know in the city agreement, they had gotten some additional work from Endot as well. They got in kind, I guess, assistance, I think, maintenance and help. But none of that's in here. This reads more like a contractor that's going to be doing work. But the only objective thing that I thought is obviously we can't submit an invoice before February 1st unless we've already done that.
No, we haven't. Yeah, I seen that. I, I was reading that. I think it was actually this morning, I was reading through it and I seen that. And I was like, they, they missed that on the contract. So I don't know if that keeps us. they missed that on the contract, so I don't know if that keeps us from signing it. Um, there was no in kind work, they're just wanting to, to give us the, the right of way, all the culverts, the bridge, there's a bridge on there. Um, all the liability, everything comes with it.
And give us a check for two point five.
It's very much like the city's agreement, it's just more money and there's slightly, there's, there's different.
I think the reason it's more like a contractor is because this city doesn't have the capabilities to rebuild, rehab that road where the county has the capabilities rehabbing US fifty.
And we'll, we'll probably, you know, we'll probably have to do some work to it right away, and then we'll probably take the money, I was gonna talk to Jen about the, the money, uh, cause basically, the money won't be earmarked for anything. Uh, but I don't want the money to be spent on something else because the road needs.
It, it needs a lot of work.
It needs, we'll have to do some work to it right now and then maybe use that money and, and leverage a, a CCMG grant to, to do a bigger uh, project on that section that we take over.
Right. Good. You wanna hold off on signing this contract till it's rewritten?
Um, at a minimum, I think we need to change that date because it, it's just a simple sentence and it says, we shall send an invoice by a date that's in the past, and so we don't wanna get, we don't wanna have a problem on this before it even starts.
Right.
The, there are some requirements, HR requirements, and they do these in some of these in these contracts where they say that we have to do certain things, if it's in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars, we have to do certain things with HR and employment matters, making sure that we notify people about drug usage in the workplace, and it's just.
Boilerplate stuff.
Yes, but there are things that we have to do.
Yeah.
That I just wanna make sure that.
I don't know how big a hurry we are to get this signed, I'm not, I'm not in a huge hurry yet, and I think Russ has still got the the offer on the table, and if we wanna push it off until the twenty-eighth meeting, I think we'd be fine, what's your guys' thoughts?
Tell them to get the date changed and.
Yeah, with.
When this started, I think we were talking five hundred thousand, they were wanting to give it.
Yeah, now we're two point five.
Done a great job, get it up to two point five, and well, I think.
Maybe we keep waiting and then maybe it just keeps going up.
I think, I think they're about at their limit, but.
Yeah, I think they're at their limit, but I think what, what they, I don't know that he's in a big hurry, but um, if we could either acknowledge to accept it or, or to not to accept it, and then, and get that changed, and maybe the signatures could come, maybe not at the public meeting, I think what they wanna do is their their funds and their money that they've got this year, uh, if we go too long into next year, they don't have the funds.
Allocated, yeah.
Allocated for that project.
If the commissioners are comfortable with that amount.
I'm comfortable signing the agreement as long.
Ask them about a few minor, fairly minor revisions.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can get it done.
Got a motion on that?
I will move that we execute the agreement.
And pending, pending the changes to the contract on the dates.
Yes.
Okay, got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. So well, once you guys get this, Chris, once you get that changed with the dates and everything, I think the commissioners can sign this.
Okay, and then I've got a LPA voucher.
Still got those signed?
Yeah.
Probably is done.
This might be the last one.
Let me go and get the run there.
It's from uh, construction inspection on Campbellburg Road from Lockmuir.
All right, I got an LPA claim voucher here from Lockmuir Group on Campbellburg Road Phase Four, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. With eighty percent reimbursable, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and five cents, look for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, that's all I had, thanks for being patient, like, worked through that, so.
Anything on the interlocal agreement for the parking lot that you wanna bring up, that's the next thing on the.
That, and we got, we also got the annual report, highway report too, so.
No, I don't have any, anything with me on that, for the four H parking lot.
Yeah.
Uh, just the way I understood it was gonna be the uh, EDC and uh, City of Washington, and uh, the Davis County was gonna split the cost of the materials up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, cause my estimate, I believe my material estimate was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the year before, we tried to do a, do the parking lot and it, the base failed on it, so we, we uh, had about five thousand more dollars in it, so the total, I believe, was like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of material only. Uh, and I guess the county was just gonna cover the cost of the labor and the, the equipment rental. So I don't really have anything that's done, I think it looks good.
Paid, paid for now, right?
Yeah, we gotta get paid for.
Okay. All right, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
We still do have the uh, one fifty-five bridge replacement for construction inspection from Lockmuir Group. In the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Need to get a motion to approve, to uh, approve that.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We got the annual highway apartment uh, report, Ronnie, have you a chance to look that over?
Have a chance to review.
Everything look good?
Over.
All right. Everything looks good, look for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we've got an inter, interlocal agreement here between the uh, county, city, and DCE DF for the parking lot. What's your pleasure on that, Ron?
There's things in order as discussed, motion to approve.
Okay, and that is for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the four H parking lot up there. Got a motion from Ron Arnold to approve, right?
Yes.
And I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Was that already determined on where we're to pay that from?
It was, but I can't remember, I don't remember the fund, the funds.
Okay, I can go back.
Inter, interlocal, we have that fund in the document, it says where they're putting funds into, as a specific.
Paul Williams, you're up. Yep, Paul Williams here for uh, TNC.
You had your plan, Ryan, and Chris uh, asked for updated money for safety, and if you're on the insurance guy, I don't know if he planned it that way, or what. I'm gonna start out with a fairly easy item. This is on cyber, so last year, insurance company used to do cyber, like raised the rates really, really high. So it was the Coalition, the lesser premium. The current carrier was like thirty-two thousand, we switched to Coalition for twenty-one. Um, and they had some contingencies and stuff they wanted to do after they issued it. Dale worked with Coalition very well, got everything completed that they wanted, so this year, we took it out to market again, and we actually had like three companies, several others that were much higher, but I've given you the top three companies that gave us quote because of some of the that Dale instituted, as you can see, uh, HCC is a little bit cheaper than Coalition, I talked to Dale, he said he um, is good with Coalition, he's completed everything, they worked together on this, if we go with HCC, yeah, it's a couple hundred dollars cheaper, but as me and Dale talked about, we don't know what they may come in and do an assessment and say, oh, well, hey, now that we have you, we want you to do this, this, which may cost the county more than the six hundred dollars that they're, they're trying to save, so uh, again, my, my conversation with Dale, uh, if he wants to reject any at all is, he's been with Coalition, he's been through it, and he would kinda like to see us stay with the same company.
Coalition, yeah, Dale, you got anything to say on that? Okay. I'm fine staying with Coalition, I mean, we're just a few dollars difference. All right. Okay. Maybe next year, we'll.
Keeps it from going up, you know, let's go down that route.
I don't have any issue with staying with Coalition. You got anything on that, Ron?
The devil you know is better than one you don't.
That's right.
So if no other questions on that, I look for a motion to uh, stay with Coalition on the uh, cyber renewal.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Again, thanks Dale, I know it's a lot of work to take, and ask a lot of. Second item, uh, is the workman's comp. Like I said, pertaining to uh, Chris's program. Uh, although you know, if you go to the next page, the first page, I guess, it's kinda the outline of what's happened in the past and what's happened here is that we have had instances that are causing our mod to go up. Need to work on that, uh, our mod, three years ago was only point nine six, now we're one, moved up to one point three, one point three five, so that's thirty-five percent increase just on your mod.
Right.
Um, and this last year, we had a, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in work comp claims.
Right.
That's in, in, gonna cost us to go up, um, if you look at, we're going from one seventy to one eighty-one. There's, you look at the next page, uh, go, next two pages. IPEP is a government program that ensures counties and cities, and that's just a small selection of the counties that they currently insure, just here in southern Indiana, so I mean, they are the main focus of providing work comp for government entities and cities, the city of Washington has, has IPEP as well. There, there's just not a lot of competition out there, last year, we had Bytunimus, which is a company that does work comp, and they were over two hundred thousand.
Right.
Uh, it, it wouldn't be any better this year either, so this is the, the best that we can get, I will show you.
This is just reality of having losses.
Just a small pat on the back, if you go one more page past the um, southern counties, it shows like the, the quote, see where it says a million, million, million on the right hand side, if you go on down, the original price was one eighty-six. So I did negotiate, did negotiate him down from one eighty-six to
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one, really, there was no reason to do that, one eighty-six was best premium I had anyway.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
Never hurts to ask.
Yeah, so did save you some money there by, by going back to them. Along with that, the state came out and said that the reserve officers, uh, Gary, you know that, uh, they are not covered in a workman's comp.
Right.
So the state says you have to provide them a medical program, and so this is down there in the bottom left on the thing where it says National Union Fire. So it does give them a, if they're a reserve and they get hurt, does give them life insurance, does give them health insurance coverage, and it does give them lost wages, so, cause they cannot be covered by workman's comp since they're not part of it.
We got one more officer raises a premium just a little bit then too, yeah.
Um, right, so it, it's really not a big cost, I mean, for the benefits that are provided this year, uh, we show seven officers, does that sound right? Okay, uh, and it's nine hundred and eight dollars a year for all seven.
Seven, yeah.
Again, it does provide life, health, and, and we don't have a choice, it's a state mandate.
Mandate, yeah.
So that's where we are on, on workman's comp, hopefully, uh, I'll get together with Chris and actually hear him talk about safety and you know, the, the boots and, and other items that he's concerned about for his people, and, and that's what we want anyway, not just the claims, we don't want people hurt, so continue to review those losses and talk to the Garys and the Chris's of.
Of the county.
I didn't wanna say that word, but.
Risky.
The risk people. But we'd like a motion to continue with IPEP and the National Union for the reserves on the workman's comp.
Paul, did you have a chance to see if there was any deductible?
Yes, I did, and they do not offer a deductible, and it's a good question because they, uh, he said he's had several others counties and cities ask, some of those counties are much larger than this, they're paying a lot of money too, and they've all asked, hey, can we get a deductible, and they're not offered it at this point, but yeah, good question.
All right. No other questions, look for a motion to approve IPEP for a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars for workman's comp. And then National Union Fire Insurance for seven reserve officers at nine hundred and eight dollars.
So moved.
Got two motions by Ron Arnold, I'll second both, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The other item that uh, talk about is the package. And just so you know, the package encompasses, at this point, the package encompasses the property, the in the marine, the crime, the general liability, employee benefits liability, law enforcement liability, public officials, employment practices, auto liability, and then you have a, a four million umbrella, so that's, when we talk packages, that's, that's what we're talking. So I recently, e- everybody blames shortages of, of help, but I did just recently receive this package quote, uh, and just Friday, uh, cause I knew this was coming up, been begging for it, but anyway, went through it, and there's some changes that we need to talk about, but if you look at the premium, twenty twenty-one was HCC at two thirty-three. See that, we're, are we on the same page?
Yeah, Ryan signed, yeah.
We switched last year to AMGard, because AMGard offered, offered us about a thirty thousand dollar savings. So, feel pretty good about that, the coverages were, were actually a little better, price saved thirty thousand, switched to AMGard, well, um, we didn't have the best of years, our first year with AMGard, we, we got several lo- losses and, and couple of them maybe very large losses. So AMGard comes back and gave us a rate of two forty-two, which is really only about ten thousand off what you paid in twenty twenty-one. I mean, it looks bad compared to what you paid last year, but last year was a, a, a great savings. However, they changed some rules on me that I'm not happy with, and here's what I'm going to recommend. They did, if, if you wanna slip to the next page, they'll tell you a little bit about why the increase came, not only because of losses, but it shows they did increase the property values by one point seven million, equipment had some updates, auto updates, um, and then we had a, a, a budget increase. You go back to, to the next page, you can see the, the loss history that I provided. But keep going and, well, let's, let's go back. They changed the property, I'll just tell you, they changed the property deductible from a twenty-five, well, it's twenty-five hundred dollar deductible.
Right.
That's the property it was last year, but it was this year, although they slid in a little clause in there that said we want a one percent went hell deductible, I mean, that's unacceptable, and uh, I'm gonna recommend that we stay with AMGard on everything but the property, uh, they're still offering that, and I've already talked to them about that, they're willing to allow me to do that, break that out, because the rest of it is the best I can find, there's nobody's gonna beat their line. is the best I can find. There's, nobody's gonna beat their liabilities. Nobody's gonna beat their law. There, everything else is very good. That's why on this second page, you see where I got two-forty-two minus thirty?
Yeah.
That's the property premium price. So I'd, I'd like to recommend, and I can go through more information here if you want me to, um, to renew the AMGard at two-twelve, one-sixty-five, uh, that you're gonna get about six thousand back from that two-twelve because I'm gonna build a solid waste district. Solid waste is now in this premium.
Right, right.
Uh, which we did last year. They were paying about ten. So even at a six thousand, they're saving four. Plus they're getting the advantage of your four-million-dollar umbrella. This was something we, we did last year to help the coverages premiums out for them. So on that two-twelve, we'll be able to build a solid waste.
Two-twelve is everything except for property, right?
Yes. And there's no way I can find anybody that's gonna beat that two-twelve for, with the claims we've had, with all the coverages and the, and the liability and the jail and, and everything else. Oh, they did, all people. They did bump the deductible on the jail claims from five thousand to ten. It was another item they did that only pertains to claims that go to court. And, and I think you've seen those claims I sent to you, I don't know, it was a couple of weeks ago, all those zeros.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of times, Gary, and not just Gary, but we, we county gets frivolous lawsuits. If they can handle it internally, there's no cost.
Charge, yeah.
I know Grant's been involved in some of those that, you know, how are they suing us? Well, we still have to respond. And, and those are zeros. But other than that, um, you know, we, we've got the full section here if, if you wanted to review or, um, but it's, you know, we got the million GL, million professional, million public officials, which is you guys, um, automobile at a million, and then we have a four-million on top of that. Tell you, this is the best program with the coverages and price, and it's available. I'm just upset with the property. I can't believe they tried to throw in.
You'll bring the property back?
Back.
On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, as much as I love you guys, I'll be back. Um, yes, and I'm sure I'll have options at that point. Decide what to do. I'm just not satisfied with the coverages and premiums on the property.
On the property for that one percent, is that a straight one percent deductible, or is there still a twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible with it?
It's twenty-five-hundred on everything.
Regardless.
But wind and hail.
Wind and hail, then they add another one percent on top of that.
Well, no, it'd just be one percent.
Straight, straight across the board, yeah.
Or wind and hail.
Yeah.
Twenty-five-hundred, everything else, but I find that unacceptable.
Right.
I'd like the opportunity to see if I can find something better.
Yeah.
I mean, we can go with this program and, and do the, you know, I mean, I've got the quote at two-forty-two, and they'll ins- insure the property.
I guess if you can't find anything in two weeks, then we can still go back with the two-forty-two, I'm guessing?
Right. I'd love to end it today, but.
Yeah, I understand.
I'd like an opportunity to see if I can find something better on the property.
Right, okay.
The, the date where it starts is March first?
Yes.
Twenty-eighth is definitely close, but then we can always go back if we have to.
If we have to go back to the two-forty-two.
Like, if we have that in our pocket.
Okay, yeah.
I, I just believe, hopefully, I believe we can find.
Better, okay. Any more questions, Ron?
Nope.
Paul? Well, with Paul's recommendations right now, we could go with AMGard, deduct out the property, and that would be for two-hundred-and-twelve thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Have a motion?
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron to approve. I'll second that. All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, now you have a few more.
Before, uh, Michael, let me get, did you go ahead and sign this couple papers here?
Yep.
It's, it's for the auto and, um, the other thing about that, I'll be able to get the auto ID cards out. I used to.
Up here.
Yeah, wherever the girls tell you.
Alright, appreciate Paul, thanks. Alright, we got AED device for solid waste, and I just read it through here. I guess this need approval, since they have AED to be paid from the equipment line.
So basically, since we've done the approval for the other AEDs with the highway department and community corrections, I believe is who it was.
Yeah.
They're just, would like to be a part of that as well.
And they're gonna, it looks like they're gonna pay it out of their, their equipment line item?
I believe that comes out of the commissioner's equipment line item.
Okay, the commissioner's equipment.
Yes.
Do we have an equipment line item, or is that our, what, what do we have? What?
It.
It'd be our ma- maintenance fund? Is that what it is?
It's called equipment, but there was some money sitting in there that we could use. Um, I don't know if it's been transferred into that line to, to accommodate for, but there was money in our, I think, our last meeting that we talked about that we could get it
Okay.
Moved. I've talked with Nathan in regards to that.
Okay. Any more questions on that, Ron, for the AEDs for the solid waste? If not, like, look for a motion to approve the AEDs for solid waste to be paid out of the commissioner's budget?
Don't move.
I got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We got the grant, security policy. We got that finalized?
Couldn't find the surveillance piece.
Took the surveillance piece that we talked about last time, put it in the format of the security policy and just made it one document.
Document, yeah.
That's the only thing that's changed, other than adding, um, where the employees would sign that they, uh, accept, acceptable use policy. I added the surveillance policy as one of the documents that they agreed that they'd seen do that. That's the only thing that's changed other than I put it in the, put it in the same format as the security policies. Is it in there now? Yeah.
Alright, any answer Dale on this question? Dale, I wanna appreciate you. I appreciate you getting through all this. It's, that's a pretty hefty.
Ninety pages, I think.
To get a policy in place, but sure, appreciate it.
So one thing though, uh, work with Grant, uh, I'll get with Rodney and Scott because we do need, uh, twenty-four-hour surveillance signs at the entrances.
Right.
Of all the, all the, and I'll work with Jen to get the acceptable use in the new employee pack, and then work with Jen to get everybody caught up that's already here. Get the policy out to everybody and get them to get the signed, acceptable use.
Yep.
But yeah, other than, then I work with Scott and Rodney to get some signs for all the doors. We should be good then.
Sounds good.
And we'll amend it as we need to.
Yep. I've amended it for a while. It looks like you've done your due diligence on this thing. I appreciate all the hard work on that, Dale. Alright, look for a motion to approve the new, uh, surveillance and security policy.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Dale, thank you very much. No one's, not been easy.
Yeah. Alright, we got SIDC Rehab Project Release of Lean. Do they have anybody here from SIDC? I don't think I even have any paperwork on that. Do we have anything for the SIDC paperwork for the release of lean? You got it, Grant?
That's the document that I had in the packet, but.
It's on here, but it's, it's on there, but I see no, we haven't done here. I guess we just need, have you had a chance to read that?
Document.
Wrong. Looks like the, uh, need to release the lean for these subcontractors. Looks like Bender Lumber, handling standards gathering, and then I don't, I can't make out who that is there. Leon Motors or something like that. Other than that, I think we're good. Release it. So I look for a motion to release the lean on this SIDC project DC dash twenty-one dash one-ten.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we got courthouse renovation project. I know, uh, Nathan Ron's been involved in this, trying to get this thing to the end. Do you wanna speak on the behalf a little bit, Ron?
I think we're to the point, um, where judges are, are, has agreed on the modifications mainly to accommodate the magistrate court. I would anticipate that they will be, around the twenty-eighth, to where we project out the bid.
Bid, okay, sounds good.
Appreciate everybody's input and their help on that.
Yeah. It's been a long, big task, but I think we're getting down to the end now finally. I appreciate that, Ron. Anything else on that? Alright. We've got Phil Carnese here, or somewhere, there you are. You wanna come up and introduce the new director for West Boggs Park? This is off the agenda. Morning.
On behalf of the West Boggs Park Board, we would like to formally introduce Nathan Rim. I'll let him do his little bio for you. But Nathan is originally from Dubois County and has moved back from the Carolinas to come back and assist us at the park. We're really excited to have him and forward to everything we got going, so.
Appreciate the welcome, Phil. Thank you, and everyone here. So, yeah, as Phil mentioned, I grew up in Jasper, so, uh, very familiar with the area and very excited to, um, you know, help out, bring some more recreation and, um, you know, help clean out the lake, um, as well as build some new facilities out there for everyone to use. So, I'm very excited. I've been, uh, spending the last week learning about the team and about the park. Um, we got a great team to work with there, so thrilled to join that and assist in any way I can. Appreciate it.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Welcome, yes. Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks. Alright, Ronnie, anything else?
Nothing else.
And maybe honest, have anything? If not, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims and adjourn.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Good job.